All right, good evening, welcome to November 12th, 2019 meeting of the Manchester Town Council. We'll begin with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Take care of a couple of housekeeping items here. First order of business, approval of the April, April, excuse me, October 8th, 2019 minutes. Show a copy of the minutes submitted. Any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I make a motion we approve the October 8th, 2019 minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Motion seconded in the discussion. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. We have receipt of the September 2019 Treasuries Report. Motion to receive the Treasuries Report.
I'll make a motion to receive the September 2019 Treasuries Report.
I'll second the motion.
Motion seconded in the discussion. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Then we have a check register from October 2019. We have motion to receive the check register from October with Treasury report to file next month.
It's actually, it says September's check register.
Mine says October.
You have the wrong.
It says October.
Oh.
Yeah.
Uh, sorry.
We have a lot of papers up here, you're looking at the wrong one.
Sorry.
That's all right.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we accept the October check register.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is seconded in the discussion. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, move on to the Mayor's Report. I do know we have, we have one of our favorite guests here, so I'm gonna let him speak first here at the front end of the Mayor's Report. Our District One Commissioner, Mr. Steve Lance. If you don't mind coming up.
So, good evening, everybody. First of all, Happy Veterans Day to those veterans that are in the room. Been traveling around for the last five, six days, attending many events, and the great thing about Carroll County is, I don't know that there's any school that doesn't have a veterans ceremony. So, it's an honor to be in the presence of quite a lot of folks. I was in Harney on Saturday, and they had four World War II veterans. The youngest was 95. And all four of those guys were sharp as a tack, telling amazing stories. So, it's just, it's a, it's a great time to honor those folks. And as I remind folks, you probably should be honoring them 365 instead of the four or five that we do. So, to all those in the room and all those watching that are veterans, thank you very much. I'm here because I couldn't be here last month, and I apologize for that. I actually was away last month, I think, in one of the trips that I was on with the Baltimore Metro Council. But I'm here to, again, pay a little bit of tribute.
Oh gee whiz.
And here we go.
This goes into another month.
So, my colleagues at the county office building, and all of the folks that have had the opportunity to interact and work with you, wanted to make sure that we got over here to, in person, tell you and show you the honor that should be bestowed upon you for working for a town for 40 years, which is, which is remarkable. So, Mr. Miller, I'm gonna get you out of your chair, and if you'd come over here, please. I have a proclamation that's gonna make this official to present to you. And I don't want any crying or anything like that, no tears, sorry. So, so, so...
You don't have to worry about it.
Okay.
We're good.
On a personal note, I've known this gentleman for, gosh, a lot of years.
More than 40.
We both kinda grew up in the fire department together, and spent a lot of interesting nights together.
We did.
And a lot of interesting early morning hours together.
We did.
So, I got to know this guy really well then. So, but in his role as, as all of the things that he's accomplished here in this town, we can't, on behalf of the county, thank you enough for what you have done. So, I've got an official proclamation to present to you on behalf of Carroll County, and it's honoring your 40 years with the town of Manchester. We celebrate those 40 years with you. Your career with the town of Manchester began, began on October 9th, 1979. I know you were like eight years old then. As a water and sewer operator, Steve ascended the career ladder to become Water and Sewer Superintendent, Director of Public Works, and currently Town Administrator. Steve was awarded Decision Maker of the Year in 2000 by the Maryland Water Association. Graduated from North Carroll High School in 1977, continued his education at Carroll Community College and Frederick Community College, taking courses in water and wastewater. During Steve's 40 years with the town of Manchester, he managed many projects, including upgrading the wastewater treatment plant, installing two new water towers, the Main Street revitalization project, and the new town hall where we are currently located on Victory Street. Volunteered with the Manchester Volunteer Fire Company for 47 years, serving as Fire Chief and President, and in 2014, he was inducted into the Carroll County Emergency Services Association Hall of Fame. And the residents of Manchester and Carroll County have benefited from Steve Miller's leadership and commitment to public service. They are lucky to have him as the go-to person now, and for what we hope are many, many more years to come.
It's not gonna be another 40.
Many, many more years to come. Many, 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 many. So, we therefore, the Board of Commissioners, do hereby thank Steve Miller for his service, and proclaim tomorrow... So, this relates to all of you. Steve Miller Day. So, Chief S., I don't know what in the world we can possibly do here in Manchester to, to, to celebrate Steve Miller Day.
I'll do it by taking off.
Can I have a vacation day, I want?
But Steve, seriously, again, we apologize for not being able to be here last month. But we're here today, and congratulations, man.
Thank you very much. Thank you, brother. Appreciate it.
Yeah, the group kinda caught me off guard last month because I wasn't prepared, but, you know, I appreciate the recognition that I got, the gifts, and, you know, it's, it's good. I mean, we have a great staff here. We have a great team. And, you know, I give a lot of credit to the team here at the town, and I give a lot of credit to the team at the county, too. And it's a good relationship, so I do appreciate this. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you very much. Anything for me while I'm here? I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay...
You brought snacks last week, the last month, too.
There's no snacks tonight?
No snacks, yeah.
Want to take, wanna run down the sheets or something?
We got one now.
If, if, I'll, I'll, I'm gonna stay throughout the meeting, so if there's anything that you have or wanna refer to me on, you know, feel free.
Okay.
Just real quick, we're honored again, which, which is important for you as well. As one of our towns, we are and did, did achieve our triple, triple A credit rating, again, through all three of the big, the major New York financial institutions. That's huge, second year in a row. If you read today's paper, there was a big article on how we were able to get a really good rate on selling bonds, which is gonna save the taxpayers about $5 million over the next 10 years. Do the math, that's about $500,000 a year that we're gonna be able to free up to put to other projects, which we're really excited about. And with Kerwin coming down the pike, with the education funding, and the uncertainty of what that means to everyone, we're glad to have a little bit of extra in the, in the coffers, if you will. So, back to the veterans, we received two awards. We got one today, which we were very honored. That took us by surprise. But the county received an award for all the things that we do for our veterans. And we are also receiving an award in December at the Maryland Association of Counties Conference for the things that we do here in the county for our veterans. By the way, those things that we do, the best county in the state of Maryland to provide the resources for veterans. And we've got a ton of them here. So, again, for those that are listening, veterans, if you haven't reached out to register as a veteran in Carroll, doesn't mean you have to take any of our resources, but at least we can have you on our list in case you need that. So, that along with the free shuttle that we provide to all of the institutions for medical needs, we're really doing a lot here. So, so, kinda quickly, that's, that's a couple of the things that are going on. It's always an honor to be here, Mr. Mayor and Council, and I thank you for all that you continue to do to be one of the shining municipalities in the county.
On a serious note, thank you for, for coming out here. You've been a presence here over the years. You've been a Commissioner, you've been, been a regular visitor. Certainly appreciate you coming in and recognizing Steve has been an asset to the town longer than anybody that's sitting here. So, we've been lucky to have him and hopefully have him for, like you said, he's saying it's not 40, so maybe it's, you know...
Yeah, 39 and a half. Thanks. My, you know, my door's always open, and you guys got my...
Yeah, you always pick up the phone and call it.
Yeah, you guys got my phone, phone number, so I'm here to help if, if you guys need it. So, all right?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, going off script here, a little bit too, while we're on the Mayor's Report, I wanna bring up Mr. Bill Early from the form of the audit, so he can give his report, answer questions, and we can let him be on his way.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Especially to Steve. I didn't realize I've been, had the pleasure of working with you for half your career only.
It has been. I was just thinking about that, Bill, when you walked up there, yeah.
I would tell you, for the 22nd time, that Kelly is staying out of jail.
That's good. That always worries me.
Steve has asked me that for 22 years of doing the audit every time he walks by.
I was just, just keep Kelly out of jail.
Keep Kelly out of jail, so. But thank you all. I am here to present the audit of the financial statements for the year end, June 30th, 2019. I will say this year was one of the smoothest years, I think, we've had in a while, mainly because there was no new accounting standards we had to implement, so that kept everything going smooth. And also, as far as, we didn't have to do any last minute budget amendments or anything like that, so we were able to issue one time to the state of Maryland, so everything was filed by October 31st, which is required. We do have the same two findings. We actually have had a few more in the past, but they're down to just the standard two, and that is the preparation of financial statements for which you rely on Kelly, which she looks to us for guidance regarding the high level of technical stuff that you don't worry about on a day-to-day budgetary basis. Your statement's general budgetary basis, and GASB requires us to do full accrual, so we assist Kelly in making and proposing those general entries which she reviews and accepts and posts. The other one is the segregation of duties, which, again, I'm honored to just sit here and watch that you accepted the check register and the Treasury report, so I know that that control is working, that you are receiving that on a monthly basis, and able to review that if you have any questions. So, those are the two findings that we've had every year, and we will continue to have, just due to the nature and the size of the town. All in all, the financial statements, they're presented unmodified opinion again this year, which is the highest level of assurance we can give on a financial statement. We went through, we had even less adjustments this year than we've had in the past, so again, everything was ready and in good shape what we can. I wanna take a moment to thank Kelly and her staff for doing all they do while we're here. We come in, and they're trying to do their normal daily job for two weeks while we're peppering them with questions, in and out. We take over the conference room with anywhere from three to four staff on a daily basis, and are here for a couple weeks, and the only thing we give them while we're here is two slices of pizza, so. That's all they get, and they have to put up with us for the whole week, so. But all in all, a good financial statement for the year, a good report, where we've issued our letters to governance, which would be issued to you all. That goes through the financial statements at a high level. But again, there's nothing in that report that is not standard from year to year that you all have always heard. So, at this point, I will answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Bill?
I don't have any.
Okay. If you ever do, we're available to stop at any time.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, continuing on with the Mayor's Report. A few general announcements. The last yard waste pickup, I know there's been some activity with this. I've personally gotten some phone calls and some emails. There's been a lot of, or a decent amount of Facebook and in the communities asking, you know, when, when do we do in yard, when do we do in leaves? Yard waste pickup will continue on Fridays until the end of November, November 29th. Leaf pickup is on Mondays. Again, if you can get that, you know, those down-in piles to, to the curb, those are on Mondays. Residents need to be aware that if the weather is bad, it may take Public Works longer to get to all the streets. Please be patient. I'll add to that, if, if the Public Works guys just get busy, right, if we have a water leak someplace or something else comes up, you know, they get started pretty early on Mondays. They'll get to everybody they can get to. If your pile of leaves happens to be there on Tuesday, and all likelihood get to it on Tuesday. So, please work with us on that. We are getting around to, to get to everybody as quickly as we can. Town offices will be closed on Thanksgiving holiday, on Thursday, the 28th, Friday, the 29th. And more to come on this, but we have our Black Friday Open House. It'll be held Friday, November 29th, beginning at 6:00 PM, lighting the Christmas tree in front of the Memorial Building, which is the, the old town hall down on 3208 York Street. And sure, he's gonna have some comments too, but I'm gonna put Guy Gary on the spot here, but Guy Gary is always the guy to talk to about the goings-on for Black Friday. So, that's all I have. With that, I'll turn it over to Town Administrator.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members of the community. Go ahead and go over the October 2019 Administrative Report. The Package Good Store Project, work has virtually stopped on that project. I believe this is due to some site and ADA requirements on that project. The opioid litigation, no update at this time. Mindy drive speed concerns, I supplied you with traffic data that was collected by Carroll County. The Lippi property annexation, we held workshops on both October 15th and again on November 7th in regards to that annexation. The Whispering Valley Stormwater Management Facility retrofit project, there will be an informational meeting with county and town staff in regards to the work that's going to be done at the Whispering Valley Stormwater Management Pond. This is a good project, Commissioner Lance. It's a good partnering project between the town of Manchester and also the resource management at the county. Under code enforcement and zoning, you have in front of you the monthly update. The Roarball property issues, due to health issues with the property owners, we have yet to get a meeting set up with them. The DASH property, Mr. DASH's attorney has contacted our attorney for information regarding this case. And preliminary work has begun on the installation of wireless facilities or small cell sites in regards to that ordinance. Councilperson Hal and I had a conversation before the meeting tonight in regards to some information regarding cell sites that came out at the fall MML conference. Under miscellaneous items, our first annual harvest happenings event was held on October 12th, and that was a huge success. Staff met with another lighting vendor on October 28th in regards to our athletic field lighting, which that company is very promising. So, Kelly and I were both, both pretty impressed with that. Also, Kelly and I met with BG&E reps on October 29th in regards to the ownership, responsibility, and maintenance of the 67 decorative street lamps we have throughout the town. BG&E made it very clear, if these poles are hit or damaged, it is the responsibility of Manchester to pay for repair or replacement. So, we're trying to get the word out to the residents. If they see someone back into one, damage one, please let the police department or town hall know as soon as possible, and get a tag number, because we've had three hit over the last year, and this is a replacement cost that we don't have monies budgeted for of around $3,000. So, if you see something happen, please let us know. We're also in the process of checking with our insurance carrier to see if they are covered through our insurance policy. Also, during that meeting, we talked to the BG&E reps, and they brought up the point in regards to vehicle charging stations at town facilities. Do we have anywhere that they would like to install a vehicle charging station? So, that's conversation yet to continue throughout. I met with reps from Manchester Baseball on October 30th in regards to improvements that they would like to make in 2020. They also pointed out to me some safety concerns they have, which we will look into during our 2021 budget workshops after the first of the year. And also, we had our second annual Halloween havoc at the skate park, which took place on November 3rd, and this event was also another huge success back there. So, any questions for me?
Steve, I know people are very excited to see sheets open. With regards to the Package Good Store, after they resolve their current issues, how far along would you say they are, ballpark?
I would say they're pro, well, see, we're getting late in the season with the cold weather and the black top on the parking lot. I'd say they're pretty close to maybe 88, 90% complete. So, that's gonna be a tough one to get that black top in, you know, cold weather, so.
Any other questions for Steve? So, see, according to the agenda here, we wrote out we were gonna handle this HVAC bid.
Yes, that's an action item, and I believe Mr. Coons has information on that. Both in his report and also as an action item.
Well, I see. Never mind. I'm getting ahead of myself. All right, if there's no other questions for Steve, I'll turn it over to the Chief of Police, that's the police report.
So, for the month of October, we responded to 101 calls for service, 20 of which were out of town. We investigated two part one crimes involving thefts, one of which was cleared. Both of the thefts were minor. I think they, we kinda, it was like, do people know who the suspects were? So, it was nothing major. It's not like we have a thief running throughout the neighborhoods. We did criminally charge five persons, most of which was for traffic. Three were traffic related, one was for the theft, and one was for assault second degree. For the overdoses, the Sheriff's Office is reporting a 20% decrease when you compare January to October 2018 and January to October 2019. In 18, there was 444; in 19, there was 356. We are 356 overdoses year-to-date, 169 are heroin and fentanyl-related. We do have 43 fatalities. When you break it down by the municipalities, Hampstead is 10 year-to-date, Manchester is 6. We did have one during the month of October, non-fatal. Sykesville is 3, Tawnytown is 31. They had four during the course of October. Westminster is 115. They had 14 during the course of October. And Mount area is 16 with two in October. The October totals were 33 overdoses, 15 heroin-related, and six fatalities. Traffic enforcement is continuing with a total of 203 total violations, consisting of 166 warnings. Halloween, as you know, we had two. Some of the residents were concerned about the weather. We did get Halloween off on Halloween, and I don't know if you take notice, I'm sure you do. Most of the streets are dark, so this year, your officers handled out, handed out 100, 1400, I mean, four, yeah, 1400 glow sticks. We did 1,000 on Halloween, and we did another 400 in Crossroads Overlook, because they elected to have another Halloween. So, that was pretty, that was a pretty good success. During the second Halloween, the Manchester Volunteer Fire Department, they also came out, lit up the corners of Bachman and Crossroads Overlook, and they participated as well. I think they were handing out safety bands and things of that nature. So, it was a pretty good success there. That's about it for us. It was pretty quiet, knock wood.
Chief, with respect to the Halloween, I know that it created some, you know, last-minute confusion and chaos, probably both, you know, for us, for, for your group, and for the neighborhood. My concern with, you know, this, I sort of view as a one-off, right? Like, we thought like, oh, it's, it's gonna be really bad, or the winds are gonna be 50 miles an hour, trees are gonna be falling into the roadway, it's just gonna be, you know, unsafe. The, the risk of doing, and sort of, you know, helping the facility what we did, which I think, I think we handled it the right way.
We adapted, yes.
Was that, on a year-to-year basis now, when we get down to that week, we start looking at like, well, what's gonna be the nicest day? Which day is gonna be 65 degrees? And everybody starts heading into a different direction, which, for the town's perspective, creates a logistical nightmare in terms of how do we schedule our, our police, how do we make sure that we get enough people out into the neighborhoods? You know, how, how would you even communicate that out? You decide on Wednesday it's gonna be, you know, it's tomorrow, no, never mind, it's Saturday. And we, we deal a lot of folks that come from outside the municipality to come in and park on the streets, and we do our best to work with them and try to keep the young ones safest at crossing. A number of years back that this group brought up, there was a suggestion that came from some of the community to always put it on Friday, or always put it on Saturday, and I think that was resoundly decided, no, we're just gonna go with Halloween. So, next year, you know, if the same scenario comes up, is, is our position, and I'm asking as much as I'm directing to say, like, hey, unless there's really a situation that looks like it's presenting an unsafe night, Halloween's the night where we're gonna, you know, October 31st is the night where we're gonna plan to be out in the neighborhoods. That's where we're gonna have police scheduled the whole night, where we're handing out glow sticks, where we're doing our best, and we, and we can't kinda like wait till the last minute and then scramble all over the place. It just, it was very difficult, I think, for us to, to help pull that off this year. Does everybody feel the same way?
Yeah.
Yeah, I say stick to the plan. I mean, I look at it this way. For the last six years, we have, we haven't had any problems.
Yeah.
So, there was a chance of weather, we keep an eye on the weather, and if there's a drastic change in the weather, worst-case scenario, the officers will start making announcements on their PAs to start clearing the streets.
Yeah.
But it, it was pretty smooth.
Yeah, I think it, it could've gone worse, but I know it kinda monopolized a lot of time at the last minute trying to, trying to, to bend with the flow, so to speak.
Right.
I have one more question about the heroin numbers. So, I know that we're, you know, overall, like, you know, we look at 10 months and 10 months, 20% decrease. Are we seeing within that 2019, where the overall number is down 20, are we seeing any kind of bounce as we're moving towards the fourth quarter here of, hey, we've had an overall reduction, but all of a sudden, things are picking up now? Or are they, are they continuing to trend down or flatten out?
I think last week, they had a spike, so that's a tough number to forecast.
Okay.
Kinda tough to do, because I think it's sort of based on what kinda crap comes in with whatever drug they're using too.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Because they're finding all kinds of interesting things to infuse in these things that make it really difficult to keep sort of a tracking method.
Or, or can, if you drill down too tight to keep a consistent metric? So, one small spike cannot be indicative of the, if we're overall doing the right things to combat this long-term.
Right.
Yeah, last week was from Baltimore County all the way up. It traveled from, down by the city line, straight up Racers Town Road, you know, straight up Route 30, so, and over to Westminster and everywhere else, so. It wasn't just us, but...
Our biggest hope, I would think, on this whole problem is education. You kinda hope that next generation doesn't get involved with it. They steer clear of it. I mean, you can only hope and pray, 'cause I'll, I'll call it how it is, when you have, like, the councilperson just said, Baltimore's drug problem is out of control. So, it's lucrative, so it's gonna continue to rise and fall, and if they decide to put that hot load in to sell their product because they're coming from a different area, we're gonna experience overdoses.
Right.
And I can tell you, Mr. Mayor, in reference to your question, we are encouraged by the downward trend, based on the fact that we think we're trying, we're doing the best we can to get to every student that we can get to in the county. And we're hitting elementary schools now, which is absurd, but we are, because we have to. So, I think we're seeing a downward trend based on that education aspect, so.
On the long-term...
We're hopeful, that we're cautiously hopeful.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it seems like finally this year, some of those longer-term strategies are paying off. Before, it was like, well, we need to keep doing this and keep doing this, and the numbers are just getting out of control. But, okay. And then, I guess, I know we're a couple of weeks into, it's a little bit, this means a little bit later in the month, and some of them are, continuing on, on the traffic enforcement after Halloween now, the same path that we've been on.
We're gonna maintain high enforcement for sure.
Okay. Yeah, I know, I know, I see the guys out when I'm out and about, so. Any other, I know I was doing the talking, any other questions for the, the chief? All right, we'll go to Director of Public Works.
Right.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council.
I'd like to bring your attention to the Water and Wastewater Data Report for October 2019. One correction we just picked up on, the average gallons per day irrigated was actually 688,000 gallons, not 926,000 gallons. So, if there's any other questions on this, let me know.
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Total gallons under wastewater, and I'm sure this probably has something to do with the weather, but I'm just curious, where it goes from 13,700, well, 13,761,000, and then it says the previous month?
Oh, is that your, under irrigated?
Yeah. Is that just?
I believe that is correct.
Okay. I just, I just saw a big difference. I was just curious what that was. You see it under wastewater?
Doesn't seem right to me. Hold on one second.
I didn't do the math on that.
I was just asking, it just looked like a big difference. I was just curious.
Well, it's the same numbers.
Well, it's the same number as wastewater treated.
Yeah. Sorry, I'm...
Okay, we'll, we'll get back to you on that one. Yeah, another math, uh, mistake possibly. Okay, so, uh, the DPW report, uh, on water, we had zero water leaks on the private side. We had one water leak on the public side, and that was actually here in this building on the police side in their bathroom. For hydrant flushing, we're complete with that for the fall, and that was done on October twenty-ninth and November sixth. Our Delwell wellhouse standby generator has failed, and currently we're gathering prices and options on a replacement for that. Wastewater, we had no sewer backups on the public side or the private side. Wastewater treatment plant E and R upgrade and optional expansion. I sent a packet, information packet out about two weeks ago on our chosen engineering firm to, uh, the Department of Public Works, uh, M D, M D E, Department of Public Works, waiting on their blessing to award that to, uh, C D M Smith out of Lancaster. Maintenance road stormwater management, our generator preventive maintenance program has been completed for this year. We do that once a year, no matter how many hours are on the, uh, generator, just as a maintenance thing, check the batteries, check the fuel filters, stuff like that, just so they fire right up when we need them. Historical center block wall on the west side, uh, if you notice, we pressure washed and painted that. That was our staff that, uh, performed that. The Christmas tree upper ball field lights have been repaired, and that was an outside contractor. The skate park entertainment area platform, our staff built this platform out of asphalt millings that we had from our street rehab projects. Had it done in time for the Halloween havoc, uh, the skateboard event. Parks and facilities, the Westman Valley signed rehab, that's still a work in progress. The historical center air conditioning rehab, we received pu- uh, we received four total proposals. This is an action item that will be coming up shortly. Our, our snow plane preparations are in place for the, for this winter. The Christmas tree park bathrooms have been winterized and have been closed for this year. Ready to move, uh, onto the action item, but I, if you have any questions on my report, let me know, and I think Steve's working on that map.
Well, Steve's looking at that, just to clarify, the bathroom in the police side was leaking, but it was a suppressor, what's it called, a hammer?
Uh, water hammer suppressor.
Blue.
Yeah.
And thank God Sergeant Kazmeyer came in, if not, probably the whole building would've been flooded.
Had to be a defect, I mean, the building's only two, three years old.
Yeah, it looked like a geyser.
Yeah.
Glad you clarified that.
Yeah, it just didn't sound right when Director Paul Begore stole it to that.
Councilperson Smith, we will get you those correct numbers.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I was just curious, there was a big difference.
That was a good catch, yes.
Okay.
So we will get you those, those numbers.
Yeah, something was a little square, we, uh, we should probably just, for the record though, make sure we get the right numbers in there.
Yes, that, that is correct, we rely on these reports and, yes.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So if there's no other questions, I have one action item, and that's the historical center air conditioning rehab. We received four proposals. I am requesting approval to award this project to DNS Green Services in the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred and four dollars and sixty cents, and this is within budget.
So this, I guess for the right end, you know, this is, in the record, just reading it in there. This removes the, includes removable disposable equipment, furnishing installing, two new units, including all mounting hardware, refrigerant piping, drain lines, wiring, breakers, wall brackets, ductwork installation, and labor with a five-year warranty.
That's correct.
No substantial differences in what the proposals that, that came in included.
They're, they're all apples to apples, yes.
Do you have a motion, any other questions for the Director of Public Works on the, uh, the air conditioning system?
I'll make a motion, we accept DNS Green Services bid in the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred four dollars and sixty cents for the historical center air conditioning rehabilitation project.
I'll second the motion.
The motion, and the second, and the discussion? Call if there's a favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's all right. Thanks Rodney. Get the white papers here, I think we're on to I think we're on to questions and comments from the community, right? All right, we have, uh, Mr. Tom Kirk, Mindy Drive.
Tom Kirk, twenty-five cent one, Mindy Drive. I'm just here, uh, for the fourth time, I'm not trying to be a pest, but, um, on Saturday I was doing some work, doing some leaves, and, uh, my dog was almost killed by a very, very fast car coming up the street from Southwest. And we have an electric fence, but apparently it wasn't working, and, uh, the person literally did not stop. They just, I mean, I'm yelling, out in the middle of the street yelling and screaming, and they just buzzed right around me. And this just continues to be a problem. I know that, I know that a, uh, speed thing was put up further up Mindy Drive with a, um, you know, with a light and whatever, but that does, and it does nothing for the cars that are coming up from Southwest and speeding up the road. It continues, I see it every single day, I'm out there, and people just keep on going. So, I, I, I guess, you know, my question is, um, there's a, there's a stop sign at the end of Charmel and Southwest for one house. It's been there since nineteen ninety-one, cause I talked to the people that own the property. There's also a three, uh, three set of stop signs at, um, I believe it's South, um, Washington Way at Ridgeway. There's a three, there's a three-stop sign there. So, I, I'm just, I'm pleading for a stop sign. I know the, uh, the statistics, I know that everybody's gonna stop, but at least that will slow people down to a, to a safer distance and a safer speed coming up my road, endangering myself, my animals, my grandkids, and everybody else that lives on that street.
Well, the other concern we have is from people up the other end that were concerned, if we put a stop sign at that sign, all it's doing is making people speed up to the other end. So, you know, I'm not sure...
Well, we need to start somewhere, so, this is, I've been, I've been asking for the, the past six months, and I, there's still no stop sign there. So, uh, you know, I'd really appreciate some attention to this, and sooner than later.
What, we have the statistics back, and, and I know you, you know that, we have the statistics back from everything that we've done. And I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, did something come back differently on the last one? Cause I don't recall, I've read so many of them, I'm not even...
Actually, the one I had was the county report.
Right.
The new, uh, speed sign, I don't know if we have any...
Hadn't been in long enough, right?
Yeah.
And the county report?
Yes.
I don't have it here with me, I was just...
Yes, nothing's changed on that.
The speeding just continues every single day. It hasn't stopped, it hasn't slowed down, it just continues. And I, I just would really appreciate something to be done about it. I mean, when there's a stop sign at Char- at Charmel and Southwest for one house at a dead end, I don't understand that.
Are you talking about Southwest, Southwestern and Charmel, right?
Yeah, we, stop, just, take a break for a second, I was letting you speak for a little bit. Stop signs don't exist for a certain number of houses, stop signs exist to be traffic-controlled devices, right? So it doesn't really matter how many houses are there. And maybe not all stop signs that we have in place are working, um, in order to slow traffic down. I mean, that, that can be debated. I, I would take some exception to say, there hasn't been any attention paid to this, in fact, there's been a lot of attention paid to this, both from, from this group, and then administratively from the police, working with the county. But we have to gather empirical data, we just don't make decisions based off of anecdotal, you know, hey, it's craziness in front of my house, let's put a stop sign in front of my house. It's just, it's just not how decisions are made. I think we are continuing to, to gather information. I don't, I can't speak for everybody here, I, you know, I run the business meeting, I don't have a vote. I don't know if there are the votes to put a stop sign, don't put me a number of feet, four or five hundred feet from the other stop sign, because we just, it's just not, that's not a distance where we would put a stop signs as a practice.
It's four hundred ninety-eight feet, they measured it.
Something like that. So, I can ask the group, again, I don't, I don't have the, the power to make a motion or to take a vote on this. I know we have one person not here, but I think we are, we are paying attention to this, we are, everybody is working on it. We're gathering information, the same that we'll do with any complaints that come in from any place in town. But we have to gather evidence, and then make the best decision we can, it's the only way that we can do things.
I know, there's a lot of traffic on that road, and then the numbers will back me, back us up on that.
Yeah, but you were talking about speed, there are a lot of numbers, but
Yeah.
I think that, the, the numbers that we got back in, if you multiply out times the number of houses in the area, it's kind of coming in, it's, it's pretty, it's on par with other streets compared to how many people live there, how many people kind of go in and out.
Well...
Right, I mean Charmel's got a ton of numbers too, Southwestern has a ton, ton of numbers, Hallie Avenue has a ton of numbers, Swiper has a ton of numbers, I mean...
Our neighborhood was two-thirds more than what your, your neighborhood has, and we still have those issues of people
Yeah.
flying and, and speeding and, and cutting through, we still have them. And we had, if I'm not, if I'm not correct, we had like two-thirds more than that.
And, um, and I'm sorry to cut you off. We, we, we are also continuing the conversation, which will not stop, about as technology changes, how does that change the way that we try to make the neighborhood safer, which, you know, pri- a primary piece of that is speeding. Stop signs haven't been successful every place, there's a stop sign at Swiper and Hallie, right? There's just, there's a, there's a, there's a stop sign at, at Charmel and, and Susan Ann. All of these places continue to be problems, we, we, we put a stop sign there and it kind of like, uh, kind of mitigates one problem, creates another problem. So...
They just run them in our neighborhood.
Well, and, and I know that, but, but more people will sl- at least slow down than...
And I, and I don't mean to be so argumental, but the, the anecdotal person that you're saying is, is, is being a jerk in your neighborhood and driving double the speed limit or double the speed limit plus, it's doing it, somebody's doing it in every neighborhood. That person's gonna run the, the speed, the stop sign. So the person that you're most angry about is gonna completely disregard the stop sign anyway.
Well, I'm gonna stand, I'm gonna be out in the street, cause I, I'm just, I'm tired of it.
I don't really recommend that, we had that happen in another neighborhood, and it was not a safe situation. I think Chief Hess can tell you that, if I recall.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm just done. I'm really tired of it, so, we'll see.
But we can assure you, as the mayor stated, it's not that nothing's being done. Investigations are ongoing, and at some point, recommendations will be made to us.
If he's gonna walk away and not listen, don't, don't waste your breath.
Okay, um, moving on.
Thanks Dale, I appreciate it.
Anybody from the community like to speak that, that did not get a chance to sign in prior to the meeting? Guy, I'm putting you on the spot in November, do you want to talk about Black Friday?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just before I move on to Black Friday, or talk about Black Friday, I just want to recap that we had our seventh, MAMA, the Manchester Merchants Association, had our seventh annual Halloween costume contest and cakewalk, uh, October twenty-eighth. We gave away twenty-one cakes and two pizzas, and that was all free, the whole event was free, it was to the whole public. We had about a hundred and fifty people show up, um, most of them were in costumes. The cakes and the pizzas were all donated by local businesses, so it had their names on there, and everybody was just really happy to participate in that. We also gave out five, uh, trophies for different categories of costumes, um, so that, that went very well. It was our seventh one, and we did it at the Gary Business Center, and that was a great event. For those that missed it, catch it next year. MAMA is also proud to be working with the town again this year for the Old Fashioned Christmas Open House, uh, November twenty-ninth. It'll be from six to nine. For those that are familiar, we've been doing it, I don't know how, how many years it's been going on, it's been going on long before I got involved in MAMA. It's an opportunity to come out for the public, come out and visit all the stores and businesses on Main Street. Go in, check them out, you don't feel any obligation, you gotta buy something or anything. Most of those businesses will have treats, snacks, and drinks for you, um, as well as showing off what they do, their services and their businesses. One of the couple of big things that have, that we're changing this year, were, we also opened this up to outside vendors, home-based businesses, things like that. So they're gonna, and the past years, we've had them at the Activity Building, we're gonna have everything on Main Street this year. So it's gonna be a combination between the Fire Hall has generously donated a good portion of the Fire Hall for us to have the vendors in. And then at Gary Business Center, we happen to have a, a space available for rent that we're gonna utilize as well to put vendors in there. So every vendor will be on Main Street. The town is providing a hay wagon and tractor, again, they're donating to shuttle people from one end of town to the other. And we're doing our cost, uh, costume, our contest again. This year's gonna be a scavenger hunt, and for those that want to participate, we'll have some big maps printed up. We're finalizing them right now, actually as we speak, uh, one of our guys is finalizing it. We hope to have those printed in the next couple of days and out around town, so you can pick them up. But basically, if you want to participate in this, a chance to win a gift basket, you go around to the businesses, there'll be a scavenger question. It might be the kind of thing you gotta ask the business owner, or it might be something visible that you can get. Anyone that fills that all out, turns it in at the end of the night at the Fire Hall, we'll have two or three gift baskets that we're gonna have, and we'll pull out of the completed entries winners for that. Again, the event is officially from six to nine, usually around eight o'clock it starts to wrap up, a lot of the businesses are closing up at eight. Couple other things that are happening this year is the Fire Department is gonna have a train garden upstairs,
Correct.
which is very exciting to have that back, and I believe Santa, pictures with Santa are gonna be upstairs as well.
That's a possibility, great.
What I heard, the latest was there were gonna be photos with Sam's gonna be upstairs. Of course, the Firehouse will be open, um, for kids to come and check out the equipment, they're gonna have their, their usual snacks and drinks there. And we are gonna have the, for the vendors, some of the vendors are gonna be able to open earlier at four o'clock. I, I'm not gonna guarantee they'll all be open at four o'clock, cause some were other places during that day, won't be either set up. But they will all be open at six o'clock, so when the mayor does his official kickoff ceremony at the tree, all the vendors will be open at that point. And, and basically, I, I think that's it, it's, it's always a great time, it is weather, it's gonna happen no matter what the weather, right? We're not gonna postpone it for any reason, um, hopefully we'll have nice weather, traditionally, we, we do have a nice, a nice warm turnout. And I'll be there, uh, at the Christmas tree lane to hand out those maps. We're hoping to get them out and have them around at various places, businesses around town ahead of time, so you can grab them ahead of time, and if you want to participate in that. Otherwise, just come out and visit everybody, like I said, they're all open, all the businesses are excited to have people come in, stop in and see them, and, and visit with them. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else before we move on? All right, and move on to committee reports, Councilwoman Smith.
Um, I have a meeting this week, so I don't have anything to report, but I would like to say one thing. For everybody that comes to the meetings, and I hope this isn't out of line, but for everybody that comes to the meetings, we appreciate everybody that comes, and anybody has anything to say and signs in, and we try to give the respect to listen to everybody. But if you're gonna come to these meetings, and we don't wanna have to recite the code of conduct on the back, but I would hope you give the same respect to the council and to everybody sitting up here, because we certainly do the best we can to help everyone, but some of the actions that, that occur should not be happening. And in the future, I would, I would think that that's, that's gonna be stopped before it gets to that, because when, for example, council, council person while they're speaking, that's, the which has happened is not acceptable, so...
All right, uh, Councilwoman Miller is, is out ill tonight? Councilwoman Pacelli?
Well, Guy already covered the Old Fashioned Christmas Holiday Open House, which only leaves one other item. The next MAMA meeting will be November twenty-first, Dutch Corner at noon.
I didn't mean to have him give you a report.
That's all right.
He's more thorough.
Had the flyer and everything, I was all set to go.
First-hand information, sorry.
Uh, Councilwoman Howe?
I attended the meeting last night for the parks, and they're starting to work on some spring activities. On March the fifteenth, there'll be a welcome back, uh, for the volunteers. So if, if you wanna volunteer and have a little welcome back party. April the eleventh is gonna be, uh, an, a day for members, where there's a food and egg hunt. And again, there's places to sign up for it, or if you wanna come that day and be, become a member, go ahead, so you can have some fun. And May sixteen through seventeen- And May sixteen through seventeen is going to be the first camp out, apparently the overnight camp activities were a big, a big hit, and the one in the fall had to be canceled because of the weather, so they're going to have the first one on May sixteen and seventeen. And on October the thirteenth through the fifteenth, last month, I attended the Maryland Municipal League Fall Conference in Cambridge, did my duty, and that's it.
So to expand on that, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but it was very important that Councilwoman Howe attended that, something that we did talk about, I think we talked about it when you were, when you were absent, when you went to
Yes.
to the conference, are the small cell, the 5G towers, so we want to stay ahead of the curve as much as possible, we are working with the Maryland Municipal League. Did they have an update on the Ninth Circuit decision on kind of the balance of power between municipalities versus the companies?
If you, that's why they urged us to get the ordinances in place, because with FCC, if you don't have them in place, they can pretty much put them anywhere they want.
So.
So they want us to, they want us to get them in place.
So just for the group here, if anyone's not aware, you know, we're all aware of the, over time, we've had the cell towers, things like that are on top of the water towers, you have the big ones on top of the hills, or the ones that are kind of like disguised, make them look like trees, like, you know, Falls Road. The small cell towers are, the ones are going to be putting in more urban areas, so they're able to push the 5G network out, and in some places where they've already started laying these out, it's just like, it's a very industrial looking thing, like almost like every light pole or every, so, you know, we want to have some control about how, how that looks, where they go, how that affects the downtown, we put a lot of work over time on our Main Street, working with groups like MAMA to try to create a business atmosphere, and then if it kind of turns around and looks like, like a prison yard all of a sudden, you know, that's not necessarily to the benefit of the town, although we do welcome the technology, so. There are more to come on that, but we are continuing.
And along Route thirty, it'll be the state, it's their responsibility, but the problem lies when you get into the subdivisions, and then there's not enough information yet as to the, if it's harmful, you know, with the waves to people. So it's something we need to, to get in place before they get here to say, we want to do this.
Right, and Commissioner, you're probably, you guys are probably dealing with the same thing with Mako and at the county level, so. It's just one of those things where sometimes if you don't, as a governmental body, keep up with technology and what's on the horizon, they can get on top of you pretty quickly, so we're doing our best to keep up with that. All right, Councilwoman Wilder.
Okay, as you may recall, the Planning and Zoning Commission was tasked with putting together a work session to discuss annexation of the Looppe property, and then provide recommendations to the mayor and council. We did have that session last week, there was a lot of good dialogue, a lot of good ideas, so right now, our attorney, the town attorney, is kind of summarizing all that information to put into a form that can be presented to the mayor and council. We'll first take a look at it, planning and zoning, if we're comfortable, it'll come to this body for further discussion. The biggest areas of concern were water, sewer, traffic, and public safety, so a lot of good information will be provided to the mayor and council.
Yeah, very good. And that's one of the big things on the horizon for the town right now, too, is.
And for those who aren't familiar with Looppe property, if you're on Route thirty heading south, just before you hit Maple Grove, just before the dentist office, it's a big, large piece of property off to the right, as you're heading south on thirty.
Across thirty from the high school, essentially. Yeah, so, you know, it's a complex property, some of it's already in town, it ties to Southwestern, kind of beyond just north, the dentist office there, some of it's in the county, so we're doing our best again to navigate that situation. I know for me personally, I don't mind saying this publicly, you know, if something were to happen there, and I think most of the folks in the meeting agreed, I'd like to see a realignment of that intersection, so we can limit the amount of entrances kind of going on and off thirty, so we could realign, have a real intersection there at Maple Grove, and whatever that neighborhood becomes, so we're able to help move traffic, some of these, all the dart on thirty and dart back off is, is not a great situation, so.
And if annexed, the yield, the number of properties would be significantly greater than if it's not.
All right, Trent, you got some stuff for us?
I do have some stuff for you. So as this meeting ends, so as many of the fall sports teams, I know the football game, the football team is having one of their last games this Friday against Wild Lake, Wild Lake, I think, and so many of the winter sports teams are starting to have their informational meetings. And as the commissioner mentioned, a lot of the schools are celebrating Veterans Day as they should, and for Manchester Valley, we had a veterans dinner this past Saturday, where obviously there was food, and the chorus sang the National Anthem, and the band played a few songs that highlighted the different armed forces, and they were recognized and congratulated. They also got free admission to the senior-directed one acts this past weekend, which was the Twilight Zone, and that went pretty well. And I know across the entire school, there's several scholarships available, like the Carson Scholarship every year, and even a few full ride scholarships, so I would advise people to try for them, why not, parents would love that. And this week, Stuff the Stairs has begun, I don't believe it's been done in the past before, it's the idea of putting a competition between the classes, because all the classes love that, and the idea is to raise funds and items for different charities. And we also have a new assistant principal, Ms. Donovan, our past principal, is now the acting principal at the Carol Carrick Career and Tech Center. The new lady, her name is Mrs. Semis, I'm not quite sure how to pronounce her name, I haven't personally met her yet, but I hope she's enjoying the school. And the first quarter ended this past week, so we're rushing through the first part of the year already. And that's all I have.
You don't have an accurate count on days left?
Yeah, no, not this time.
I was waiting for that.
I saw, I saw, here, that was my last thing.
Trent always has the days left.
You've got to count down, it's probably, I think, probably one thirty, somewhere around that then.
Be expecting an update next month.
Yeah.
Well, you just passed the end of the quarter, so that kind of like, you probably focused on that.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Trent, as always, always enjoy it. Any other business for this group? We, when we adjourn here, the motion should be to move from our business session into a closed executive session to deal with general provision, Article three dash thirty B three, three oh five B three. Consideration of acquisition of real property for public person, public purpose in matters directly related to the public business, so essentially for possible property acquisition for town business. So here, nothing, do we have a motion to move from the general business meeting into an executive session?
I'll make a motion that we move from general meeting into the business meeting, sorry.
Or executive session.
Executive session, excuse me. I was almost there.
We have a second? Falls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, good night, see you on December tenth back here for regular meeting.